I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening is an item of special business, Agenda Bill 6978, a proclamation celebrating the 103rd anniversary of Girl Scouts. A proclamation, whereas March the 12th, 2015 marks the 103rd anniversary of Girl Scouts of the United States of America, and the Girl Scout Cookie Program is the largest girl-led business in the country, which prepares girls for the future by developing five business-building skills of goal-setting, decision-making, money management, people skills, and business ethics. And whereas for over 100 years, Girl Scouting has helped build millions of girls and women of courage, confidence, and character who make the world a better place and further advances research policy and programmatic expertise on girls' behalf. And whereas today, Girl Scouts in Washington State reaches a diverse and plural constituency of 34,000 girls and ensures access for all regardless of their financial circumstances, and a dedicated network of thousands of volunteers who share their diverse backgrounds, abilities, and areas of expertise to support our girls across the state. Now therefore, I Fred Butler, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby applaud the Girl Scouts of the United States of America for their more than 100 years of leadership and expertise as the voice for and of girls, the Girl Scouts of Western Washington for providing the local support for Girl Scouting in our community, and the Girl Scouts of our city for their courage, confidence, and character to act to make our world a better place in the City of Issaquah, and encouraging all people to join me in supporting the Girl Scouts and further to recognize the outstanding contributions of Girl Scouts of the USA towards helping today's girls become tomorrow's leaders. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and seal of the City of Issaquah this second day of March 2015. Signed, Fred Butler, Mayor. And Sidney?
Yeah? This is for you.
Well, I'm gonna take these first then, but Sidney, this is for you. Thank you very, very much. Well, I think there's one, Sidney. To the rescue. Thank you. And what is the new kind?
Bubble raisins.
Bubble raisin? Oh, rah rah raisins. Okay, great. Sidney, thank you very, very much. I know our council members will appreciate this very, very much. Our next item of business is audience comments. Is there anyone in the audience this evening desiring to comment? I'll call on you in just a second. I've got a few ground rules to sort of help you out a little bit. Citizens' comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so. When recognized, please come to the lectern, speak into the microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, for example, resident property owner or business owner. Limit your comments to five minutes, and submit any written comments you have to our city clerk. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. The speaker is out of order. I will direct the speaker to return to his or her seat. If the speaker does not comply, I will then ask him or her to leave the council chambers. And sir, you raised your hand, so if you would come to the lectern and state your name and speak into the microphone.
Good evening. My name is David. My last name is Johns Bowling. I'm here representing Congregations for the Homeless. Our office is located in Bellevue, but we've been serving Issaquah for over 20 years now. I'm here today a couple of reasons. One is I just really want to thank you guys for the support you've given. Our mission is to help single homeless men on the east side move out of homelessness. That's what we do. We've been doing it for 21 years. We've been adding programs over the years. I'm also here today to thank you for your consideration of funding Arch so that we can get a permanent shelter, low-barrier shelter, where we can have low-barrier, serve low-barrier clients, and also have a day center. I just really want to thank you for your consideration. I saw Mayor Butler about a year ago, I think, at the mayor's meeting where the east side mayor's committed to moving forward and seeing if this was a good idea. There's been city and agency staff working around the year to really try to build this out and see where we can go. And I wanted to give you guys a few numbers. Right now, we have a day center. We serve about 350 unduplicated men a year have come through there, seeing around 55 to 60 men on average a day come through that program. In the winter shelter, we have close to 400 unduplicated men come through there, and we're serving over 80 in this last month and a half. We've been seeing over 80 men a night. We do give preference to eastsiders, and since we're full with eastsiders, that's who we're serving. So there's a great need on the east side, and I just really want to thank you guys for what you guys are doing in order to help meet that need.
Thank you very, very much, and thank you for your support to Issaquah, the east side, and to our citizens. Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak? Elizabeth?
My name is Elizabeth Mopin. I live at 410 Mount Jupiter Drive. I'm a resident and a homeowner in Issaquah, and I serve on the East Side Homelessness Advisory Council. I'm here partly to speak in favor of supporting the work that Arch does, partly to say that I've spoken with a number of homeless individuals, and the men who are served by Congregations for the Homeless assure me that it is the best shelter program in the county. So I would strongly support any help you can give them for the winter shelter or any of their other programs. I'm also here because I'm concerned about a pattern of taxation which applies at the state level and also somewhat at the municipal level, that the way we raise taxes often falls most heavily, the way we raise revenue, whether it's taxes or fines or fees, often falls most heavily on the poor. This proposal that you charge someone $100 to get booked into jail is going to hurt people who can least afford it. I know you need to raise funds, but please think about how you're raising funds and the impact it has on those who are already struggling. I'd also like to speak about other ways of saving money for the jail. We could be doing a lot more with restorative justice models that don't require that people be incarcerated, but find other ways for them to make restitution and to benefit the people that were victimized and then be restored to the community without becoming a financial burden on the community. Transit, Orcalift sounds like a great idea, but it apparently does not include the Puget Sound Transit buses, which we heavily rely on to get from Issaquah to the shelters. So is there anything you can do to twist some arms there? Please? And the final thing I'd like to speak to is the idea that growth is a solution to everything. Growing too fast may actually cause more problems than it's solving, so please think about that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else desiring to speak? Third and final call. Seeing no one, then audience comments are closed, and we will move now to committee and regional reports, beginning with Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a report from visiting with the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce, attending their meeting of the Board of Directors last Friday. They meet on the last Friday of each month at 7:30 in the morning, and there were three topics of most interest to us that I want to share with you. One was that they are working very hard on an executive search. We all know that Matt Bott has left the chamber for working at Sound Transit, which is great, but it left a big hole there at the Chamber of Commerce. They are moving along very well with their executive search, though, and expressed interest in having city membership helping them with their final interviews. So there'll be some very interesting partnership that way. And they also had quite a bit of reporting on their membership campaign, February and March are their big membership months of the year. And it's interesting for me to listen to that because it shows the genuine work that they do to create value for the business community here in Issaquah and the kinds of things that they're doing to work on economic development and a supportive environment for businesses here in Issaquah. And then the third thing I wanted to mention was that on March 12th noon, no, 11:30, is the ever-anticipated Innovation Luncheon, which is a wonderful annual event honoring the innovation that happens right here and the innovators in Issaquah. And there are a lot of exciting, years past, I've missed it. I am going this year, and I hope as many of us can because it's always a great showcase of the things that are happening right here in Issaquah. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pauling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From Land and Shore, on tonight's agenda, there are a couple of items on the consent agenda, AB 6947, King County, Countywide Planning Policy Ratification. And we also have an item under regular business, the docket of comprehensive plan amendments, and there are staff here tonight that will present on that. The next meeting date for Land and Shore is March 12th. The agenda item will be a quasi-judicial process for the Issaquah Middle School Master Site Plan, and that will be March 12th, 5:30 in this room. Also, the PSRC Growth Management Policy Board will be meeting this Thursday, March 5th, at 10 o'clock in the boardroom downtown at the PRC offices. The items on the agenda include a revised draft position statement on military facilities and integration into regional planning, which is something that the Sound Cities Association pick, will also be looking at some future date and bringing it back to membership. They'll be presenting their draft budget and an updated regional economic forecast and an industrial lands analysis. So if anybody wants any more information on those, I can get it for you. Their next meeting that I will be attending will be Thursday, April 2nd, and the big item on the agenda is the application for the City of Issaquah for the Regional Growth Center designation. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Mars?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City of Issaquah Council Services and Safety Committee will be meeting next Tuesday, March 10th, at 5:30 in the Eagle Room across the street. The agenda is still being developed. And then the next day, Wednesday, February 11th, Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting in Renton City Hall at 7:00 PM, and there are no items for final vote, so I won't be needing to go through any of those this evening. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cher?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to members of the viewing public. Taking things chronologically, tomorrow I will be attending a joint chairs meeting of sub-area boards that is comprised of the Eastside Transportation Partnership, Seashore, and Skateboard, which are the three sub-area boards in King County dealing with transportation issues. I'll be traveling down to Renton City Hall for that meeting tomorrow mid-morning, and we'll be talking about King County staffing levels, our legislative agendas, and other leadership-level type of items relating to the sub-area boards. On Friday, March 13th, will be the next ETP meeting. Tentatively, we are planning to have Representative Jay Rodney come and speak to us as the spotlight will potentially be shifting back to the State House after the Senate has sent them a proposed transportation package. We're also supposed to have a presentation from King County Metro. I say "supposed to" on both of those because the formal agenda has not yet been finalized, and I suppose it falls to me to make that happen. And then finally, on March 19th, we will plan to have a Council Infrastructure Committee meeting at 5:30 PM in the Pickering Room of City Hall Northwest, as usual, and that agenda also has not been set, and it's part of my to-do list as the chair of that committee as well. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Blumberg?
No report.
And Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to remind folks, in case they're interested, is the Board of Directors for Eastside Fire and Rescue has a second part of its goal-setting, annual goal-setting process this Wednesday, March 4th, at 4:00 PM at the Administration Building, 175 Newport Way Northwest here in Issaquah. That's my report.
Thank you. Council President Winterside?
No report.
Thank you. And for the mayor's report, there will be an executive session held this evening for the purpose of discussing litigation per RCW 42.30.110, per N1, per NI. The item is expected to take approximately 15 minutes, and no action is anticipated. I testified before the Senate Transportation Committee in Olympia on February the 18th, thanking them for including the I-90 improvements in the transportation package and encouraging them to increase ST3 revenue authority. The Senate Transportation Bill that passed out of committee treated Issaquah very, very well. There were three projects included, the I-90 eastbound, East Gate to Westlake-Samamish Parkway, the I-90 westbound shoulder hardening between Bellevue and Issaquah, and the I-90 Front Street Interchange Justification Report. The good news is those projects were front-loaded. The East Gate to Samamish Parkway Shoulder Hardening would begin in the 2015-2017 with construction following in the 2017-19 timeframe, if that survives the House of Representatives. And the other two would be in the 2017-2019. So good news for the City of Issaquah and our citizens. I attended the Cascade Water Alliance Board Meeting on February 25th. We received a brief report on water supply in view of the low snowpack this year. Seattle Utilities is soaring more water than usual and expects full reservoir conditions by June the 1st in spite of the low snowpack. I also attended the Sound Transit Board Meeting on February 26th, and we received a ST3 system planning schedule overview and update. That work is going forward on a fast track. And finally, at the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Committee meeting on February the 26th, I received a briefing on draft results of a transportation public opinion survey fielded between January 27th and February 4th. No surprise is there. The survey confirms that transportation is the top priority for voters in the Puget Sound region. And that concludes my report. Moving now to the consent calendar, I would ask the clerk to read the consent calendar into the record, please.
Yes. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study, and if authorized, council action will occur by a single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of account payables and payroll dated March 2nd. Item B seeks approval of the city council regular meeting minutes dated February 17th. Item C, AB 6891, amending IMC 3.78.010 inmate health and welfare account, adopts an ordinance. This ordinance has been revised, correcting two Scrivener's errors. If approved, this ordinance will be assigned number 2735. Item D, AB 6896, ratification of King County Countywide Planning Policies, approves a resolution. If approved, this resolution will be assigned number 2015-04. Item E, AB 6944, it's the Arch 2015 Proposed Work Program and Administrative Budget. This item seeks approval. Item F, AB 6945, the Arch Fall 2014 Housing Trust Fund Recommendation. This approves a resolution, and if approved, this resolution will be assigned number 2015-05. Item G, AB 6970, the Master Site Plan and Site Development Permit for Construction of a new Issaquah Middle School. This is referral to the Council Land and Shore Committee. Item H, AB 6973, the 2015 Cooperative Watershed Management Grant Application for Salmon Run Nature Park. This is a referral to Council Infrastructure Committee. Last item I is AB 6974, it's a memorandum of understanding for Public Safety Emergency Radio Network. This is a referral to Council Services and Safety Committee. This concludes the reading.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to withdraw any item from the consent calendar and move it to regular business? Seeing none, then, have the accounts payable and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
And your pleasure on the consent calendar. Council President Winterside?
I move that we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I was opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business, our first item, Agenda Bill 6935, citizen survey results. We have a presentation this evening on Issaquah's first citizen survey that was conducted in December, I believe. Deputy City Administrator Emily Moon for the staff presentation. Emily, welcome this evening.
Great, thank you very much. I am indeed pleased to report on the results of our citizen survey. As I start here tonight, I thought I would quickly cover why we did a survey in the first place. All of you are familiar with this. First, we had a city council goal, and that city council goal was to conduct that survey during the fourth quarter of 2014. We achieved that. Secondly, we should be proud to be among the high-performing organizations that do citizen surveys. Not every jurisdiction does a citizen survey, and therefore, we're one of those organizations that strives for continuous improvement, and we're not afraid to ask our residents and our customers about the quality of services that we provide. Lastly, our city's mission and values emphasize public engagement. The survey is a tool for public engagement. We also value public communication and service excellence. So the survey helps us to produce another avenue for that connection to our residents, but also seeks to better understand how we might be able to refine our services to meet our customers' needs. It's just one of the tools, though, that we use to assess that and to fine-tune our delivery. So it should be taken in the context with a lot of other data. We contracted with the National Research Center, which is a firm out of Boulder, Colorado. They've developed the National Citizen Survey, which is a tool that is used across the country and has been adopted by a number of professional associations, including my professional association, the International City and County Management Association. For our particular survey, 1,200 households were randomly selected, and that sample included all of our neighborhoods. NRC sent an advanced postcard warning people that a survey would be coming soon, and then followed up with two copies of the survey to give each household a couple chances to remember to fill it out and turn it in. Our residents also had the ability to complete the survey online or to request a copy in Spanish. Residents had six weeks to respond, and NRC used the birthday method to help to ensure random selection within the household. So birthday method asks that the person in the household that most recently had a birthday complete the survey, so you don't get same person who might open the mail every time filling out the survey. And then on the back end, we weighted the results of the survey so that we could be better assured that the results reflected our community demographics. 1,150 households were eligible. We didn't get a returned survey instrument or postcard back from those addresses notifying us that they were vacant. 274 households participated. That yields a 24% response rate. For a direct mail survey, this is within the range of being acceptable. Typically, NRC will see something from about 23%, 24% upward to 40%, with those higher percentages coming when there are additional communications to the resident, alerting them to the survey, reminding them of the survey. Or community demographics might be a little bit different, and that yields a different response rate. The response rate did vary by neighborhood, and you can see it there, 12% to 39%. And all of that gives us a margin of error for the entire survey of about 6%. The margin of error, of course, varies by question as well, because you have households that opted not to answer a particular question. The National Citizen Survey is really designed to focus on assessing livability very broadly, and so it asks residents about their opinions about community characteristics, governance, and participation, and also has a separate section that asks questions about demographics so that, again, we can make sure that we have a good sample. To fine-tune those opinions on livability, National Research Center asks more direct questions about these particular attributes, and these attributes were asked in a variety of different ways, but they all spanned those characteristics that I showed on the first page, governance, participation, service delivery. NRC also allows us to compare our results with a database of benchmark cities. There are over 500 cities that are included in this database. They range in population, really, really small towns to very big metropolitan cities, and that allows us to get a sense of what the average response is nationwide. And so throughout the report, you will see NRC depict whether our responses were higher, similar to, or lower than the benchmark, and that simply means that the average response from the residents in those 500 cities nationwide compare in that way to Issaquah's data. In addition to describing whether our residents' ratings were higher, similar, or lower than the benchmark, NRC also provides us with our numerical rank order for that particular question, and that's another variable that we plan to track. question, and that's another variable that we plan to track over time. It's one thing to say that you're similar to the benchmark, and again, comparing ourselves to other high-performing organizations that choose to do citizen surveys, so it's a nice group to compare ourselves with. But knowing that we may have scored in the top 10 percentile is another factor that we should be aware of, and we can take pride in, and we can monitor over time. So the survey produced a ton of data, and I'm just going to highlight a fraction of that tonight, starting with the overall quality of life. This is a wonderful statistic for us. 91% of our residents said that the quality of life in Issaquah was excellent or good, and you'll hear me from time to time talk about the positive rating, and when I use that term, I do mean combined excellent-good score. So this is a very good indication of overall health of a community. NRC has done a lot of additional surveys and research that show that this is a very in-tune statistic for communities. Breaking down quality of life rating a little bit more, nine out of 10 of our residents gave positive ratings to overall image or reputation of the city, the city as a place to raise children, Issaquah's overall appearance, the city as a place to live, and their particular The arrow pointing up is my shorthand for all of those were rated higher than the benchmark, and the arrow pointing to the right means that it was similar to the benchmark. But again, nine out of 10 said that the quality of life in these ways is excellent or good. Our residents also gave very high marks to our natural environment. Most of these particular data points were higher than the benchmark, so this is one very large highlight from the citizen survey. The natural environment questions in particular focused on overall quality of the natural environment, the cleanliness of Issaquah, and the air quality in the city. Those were the three in particular that were rated higher than the national benchmark, but all of the variables in that category received very high marks. Safety was another place where we received very positive ratings. The overall safety in the city, safety in respondents' neighborhoods, and safety in Issaquah's downtown and commercial areas received the highest marks. Recreation and wellness also hit a pretty good home run, scoring many particular data points higher than the benchmark, but all of the facets that were evaluated in this broad category were very positively rated. The survey asked our residents to consider what the most important focus areas should be for the city in the next two years, and these are the three things that rose to the top: safety, mobility, and economy. Overall, our residents gave favorable ratings to these focus areas in their entirety, but there were a few points that were either similar to the benchmark or lower. I'll give you one particular example. The most visible exception is that only 24% of our residents gave positive ratings to traffic flow. So there were quite a few things in the survey that I think we all nodded our head and said, "Okay, I saw that one coming." The good news is, as you know, we're doing a lot of work to improve that situation. Quality of city services. Our residents were also asked, "How well is the city government performing, and how well are we meeting your needs and expectations?" More than eight in 10 participants gave positive ratings for the overall quality of city services and the city's customer service. Our residents feel good about Issaquah's governance. It's clear from those survey responses. We scored higher than the benchmark in our residents' assessment of treating all residents fairly, and while other questions in this category received ratings that were similar to the national benchmark, this is a particular area where it's really important to look at our rank order in the survey, and our placement for questions in the governance and quality of city services were in the top or top quarter or top third of the benchmark cities. Also very good results for us. Our residents also, under this category, gave high ratings to confidence in city government and the overall direction of the city. More specifically, we asked residents to rate the quality of particular city services and amenities, and we're using the word amenities to describe things that perhaps the city of Issaquah doesn't take sole ownership of providing, but are important public services that we asked about. Survey respondents rated over 30 city services and amenities: street repair, bus and transit services, yard waste pickup, drink and water, storm drainage, and economic development. The overall economic health of Issaquah, K-12 education, and health services in the community were all rated higher than the national benchmark. We had a section in the survey that was geared toward participation and engagement, and we asked residents' opinions about how they connect with their government, how they connect with each other, and the results in this section were a bit mixed. They'll take a bit of time for us to tease out information and what we want to do with those ratings. In some areas, such as stockpiling supplies for emergencies, using public transportation and car pools, recycling at home, residents are participating at higher rates than the benchmark. In other areas, such as participating in religious or spiritual activities, contacting city employees, watching public meetings, participating in clubs, and doing favors for neighbors, residents are participating at a rate lower than the national benchmark. Finally, we asked three custom questions, and these questions gathered opinions on actions and strategies that our residents believe are important to improving environmental sustainability. The second question asked residents what Issaquah is best known for. This was an attempt by our Economic Development Department in particular to try to get a little bit more information that we could use in our tourism focus. And lastly, the third custom question asked residents to express which sources of information they rely upon to learn about city activities, events, and services. Our next steps for the survey are to continue discussing those results with you at your next meeting. We are also planning to share results with the community, and we'll be working with our communications staff to figure out how to get that out into various corners. In addition, we plan to share the results at a Chamber of Commerce meeting in the near future, and I am meeting with all of our city departments to analyze the results in greater depth and to pull out particular pieces that may need attention or that we would like to celebrate. We're also going to look at things such as the "don't know" response rate for a particular question, see sort of how far into the market we are in a particular service area, and how much public education maybe we need to do to help people understand that that's a service that we provide. And we'll also start planning for the next iteration of the survey. It would be my recommendation that we skip a year, at least. The data does not tend to change from year to year dramatically. In the interim, it would be my recommendation that we use that time, those dollars, to focus on a particular service that we need to ask follow-up questions on. That'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about our survey.
Questions or discussion or comments? Councilmember Share.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm not surprised by any of this information. I think if you look around the city and you talk to anyone in the city, if you run into them at the grocery store, and someone you know or someone wants to talk to one of us on a city issue, you're going to hear very positive comments about quality of life and city services and all the things that were mentioned. So it's really not a surprise at all to hear these results, even with sort of the random survey sample taken into account. The one area, though, that stood out glaring to me of concern is on transportation. And you know, there used to be a game going on 30 years now, I think it was called SimCity, and you could take a poll of your citizens in this game and find out what was important to them. And boy, when that percentage number got low, that was the time to start fixing that area of your city, whether it was pollution or all the different things it was. And for us, when I heard 24% on traffic flow, that jumped out, and you mentioned, we're doing a lot. We've got the Mobility Master Plan that's going to be in the works, we've got the new concurrency model in place, and there's a lot going on. But I see this as an opportunity when we have that one glaring area of concern amongst our citizenry to really ramp up our efforts on ways such as the Mobility Master Plan that we can bring that number up and make people feel better about their commute and about the way they get around town. And I think, you know, in terms of taking a year off or what we can do next year, I would really like to see us focus on getting more information from our citizenry on transportation. And I know we talked last year in committee about doing a very particularized type of survey, but basically getting information from residents on problem intersections, ways that they feel improvements could be made, really digging down on that type of data. And sometimes, some of that best information comes from those who travel those roads on a daily basis and really see the pinch points and the problems and the backups that those of us can't always get to around town. So, you know, if we're looking at something that we can double up our efforts on for next year, I really believe on transportation now would be the time for a transportation-related survey, getting that data, and really helping us make our plans based on real input from our citizens on that particular area.
Council President Winterside.
Thank you, Mayor Beller. So in the Agenda Bill, there's a suggestion that we make a motion to move this for further discussion to next week's work session meeting. We generally don't need motions to decide what goes on that agenda, so I'd like to take this opportunity just to poll everybody informally in that, and I appreciate your comments, so I think that was a good example. Normally, what we do is leadership in the middle of the week, we finalize what's going to be on the agenda for the work session the next week. So already on that agenda are some city goal-related items. We're about to kick off, you know, our goal-setting season, so to speak, and we're going to get a presentation on emerging issues, and this is really dovetails very, very well. So if anybody, unless anybody has any objections, I think we'll be talking with the administration on Wednesday about how to make further use of this information in a supporting effort next week at the work session.
Great.
I'm seeing a lot of support for the idea.
I'm seeing it's nodding and smiles on people's faces, except for Councilmember Share, who pointed out that traffic flow is a real concern this evening. Anything else on this topic? Great.
Great, thank you very much.
Emily, thank you very much. Moving now to Agenda Bill 6947, 2015 Docket of Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Trish Honenin.
That works. I don't actually have a presentation. No, we get called everything, so that's perfect.
Trish, I wanted to get started.
Yes, I don't actually have a presentation, per se, but I'm here if anyone had questions on the 19 amendments that are coming before you rather soon. The public hearing is in front of Planning Policy Commission this Thursday, so you'll be seeing the amendments sooner than you normally would in a regular year, because these are due to the state by June. This is the two-year periodic update, they call it, that is being required by the state.
Let me provide a brief update.
Sure.
On the Agenda Bill. This is an annual process to amend the city's comprehensive plan. As Trish pointed out, we are working on a mandatory update at this time, and many of the items that you see listed on the potential amendments are those that would be updated as a part of the 2015. But there are some other specific items listed on this Agenda Bill or list of amendments that we have an opportunity to consider only once a year. It's all lumped together, and the action this evening would be to approve those amendments so that it could go to the Planning Policy Commission next week, I believe you said.
Right. Thursday would be the public hearing.
Any questions, comments, or discussion on the proposed amendments? Council President Winterside.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the proposed 2015 Docket of Comprehensive Plan Amendments as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any additional discussion or comments? Councilmember Share.
Thank you. I had a question about one, and then a couple comments. Number 17, Talus Edition of Emmerich as Expansion Parcel.
Yes.
I saw the map, and memory serves, this is somewhere near the start of the retaining wall after James Bush Road.
It's the...
And I'm trying to figure out the access points, for one, and I'm trying to figure out what's going there, and I'm trying to figure out whether what is going there counts against any transportation numbers for the urban village.
Okay, all good questions. When they were first asking to be Urban Village, the EIS and the Development Agreement included the Emmerich parcel as a future expansion area, but at that time, they didn't have control over the land. They had the zoning for it. Should it come in, was between 6 and 12 units an acre, so the EIS was done on that, should it someday come in. The applicant has met all the requirements to come in. They haven't given us something like a site plan or anything like that, so we don't know exactly what's planned there. We do know, though, that the transportation and the zoning were already figured out from the EIS that was done for the Urban Village Development Agreement.
So without the site plan, we don't know whether this would only have access off of State Route 900, or if somehow there'd be a driveway off Wilderness Peak that would connect in?
Correct. All we know is that they've met all the criteria to become part of the Urban Village, and a site plan or whatever they have in mind would have to come later for us to agree or disagree that they've met the actual regulations of the Development Agreement. That would be step two.
Okay. And that's proposed, then, for 2015 to analyze that? That's why it's on this?
Right, it's just to bring the Emmerich parcel into the Urban Village. It's not, as far as I know, to do any development yet. That would be up to them once you said yes or no.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Well, you know, I noted on here, speaking of the neighborhood, that the East Cougar Annexation is not on our docket anymore.
Correct, that was withdrawn last December. The applicant withdrew it.
Right, right, and I think it's, it might be a temporary thing, and it might be back before us at some point, because I believe the applicant is still marketing the 40 acres as subject to council approval. So it's a little interesting, I guess, that we're not going to just try to address it right away and figure out the future of that fairly large amount of space, but I guess maybe the year after, or the year after that. You know, I guess the only other thing I'd say, I'm fine personally, I'm moving forward with these elements, is I just wanted to mention one thing I brought up, I think at last year's goal-setting, and I don't know when the time is in the comp plan for adding new elements or doing something that major, but I still believe that an emergency management element would be worth a look at some time in the future as being part of our comp plan. We include all various facets of life in the city in our comprehensive plan, and while we have a number of emergency management policies, procedures, various documents on record, we don't really have something in our comp plan that ties those all together and sets certain standards and expectations. We've got everything from land use to parks to housing, sustainability and transportation, but I still believe when the time comes, and I don't know when that time is, that would be something that would really be worthwhile for taking a look at adding that form of new element. So with that, I'll support moving forward. So with that, I'll support moving forward on the docket for this year.
And I think part of the utilities and public services element has reference to the emergency management plan that Brett and his shop has done such a great job. I'll check that again, though, but I think that's where we talk about that, is in utilities and public services. But that's good, because, of course, we do want to be prepared in any situation.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of approving the proposed 2015 Docket of Comprehensive Plan Amendments as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Moving now to good-of-the-order, does any council member have anything for good-of-the-order this evening? Council President Winterside.
My gosh, the date just popped out of my head. I looked it up just a moment ago. Just wanted to remind everybody about that our, as elected officials, our F1 forms are due to the Public Disclosure Committee on April, April 1st, that's it, that's right. I think it's April 1st. So just wanted to, hopefully no one gets the reminder email like I did last year on, like, April 2nd, and said, "Hey, where's yours?" I'll be sending out, one other thing, I'll be sending out an email this evening, and, like I said, to kick off the goal-setting season, and so I'll be sending out an email. We were going to have the month of March for you to formulate and create your proposals and get them in, but again, we'll address more of the entire process next week at our work session meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for good-of-the-order this evening? Seeing none, then, as I announced earlier, we will have an executive session this evening for the purpose of discussing litigation per RCW 42.30.110, per N1, per NI. The item is expected to take approximately 15 minutes. No action as anticipated. We will now move to executive session at 7:53.